Good evening. I'd like to bring this meeting to order. If we would, start with the opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance. So please join us. Our Father.
To our children. Allah be la peace. That I give no call. That they will be done. On earth as it is in heaven. He gives us this day, our deliverer. He gives us such trust best. He gives us such trust best he can say. We use the name to temptation. To the rest of you. The thousand kingdom. The power. And glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the passing of our county executive, Bob Culver. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask all the council members to keep their mask on unless you're talking. If you're talking, I caught myself mumbling with the mask on, so I had to drop it. So if you're speaking, please drop the mask and then just put it back on. Just follow the governor's mandate. At this time, need a motion to approve consent agenda?
Still moved.
Got a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. All right, this time, I've got a proclamation from Mr. Riley Bosman, a recognition for coming to Eagle Scout. If you would, Mr. Bosman, would you meet me at the podium? I have to say, this is quite an achievement. I was in the Boy Scouts, but I only joined to go camping. I got a couple merit badges, but I didn't become an Eagle Scout. So that is quite an achievement and should be commended. All right, this is a proclamation for Riley Bosman. He's now an Eagle Scout. Whereas Riley Bosman, of Boy Scout Troop 151, has earned the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest rank in scouting. Whereas the rank of Eagle Scout represents accomplishments in leadership, exceptional commitment to the community, and an understanding of the scout oath and law. And whereas the rank of Eagle Scout is an honor in which we recognize Riley's diligent work and dedication and celebrate the foundation he had created for a lifetime of active citizenship. And whereas the Boy Scouts of America encourages Eagle Scout candidates to complete worthy projects to improve their neighborhoods, community, and region. And whereas Riley has devoted endless hours fulfilling the many requirements for the advancement to Eagle Scout. Now therefore, the Wacomico County Council hereby recognizes and honors Riley Bosman for his achievement of the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout and extends sincere congratulations and best wishes for a successful future, done this fourth day of August 2020, and signed by the entire county council. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to say something?
I'm good.
You're good. You don't have to. Thank you, Riley. Congratulations. All right, Ms. Harley?
Okay, good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item we have on the agenda this evening is a public hearing, a resolution number 57-2020, to amend the fiscal year 2021 capital budget in fiscal years 2021 through 2025, capital improvement program to confirm the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration, MWQFA, loan funding for the airport water main extension project as $2,928,292, and to confirm the $1,500,000 MQ or MWQFA grant for the same project, and to confirm the grant and loan funding of $4,428,292,000 for the design and construction of the airport water main extension. A public hearing notice was published in the Daily Times stating that a public hearing would be held this evening at 6:00 PM. And we have Mr. John Posota here, acting county executive, as well as Catherine McAllister with George Miles and Bure, and Pete Besik with George Miles and Bure as well.
All right, at this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comments. Do you have any public comments? Okay. This concludes the public hearing. Need a motion to approve resolution number 57-2020?
Still moved.
Got a motion, need a second.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, resolution number 57-2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
I abstain.
They got one abstention. Chair votes aye. All right, thank you. Ms. Harley?
Okay, next for your consideration is resolution number 58-2020. This is authorizing Albin Tractor LLC doing business as Carter Machinery as the sole source vendor to provide proprietary parts for the county's Caterpillar Machinery in fiscal year 2021. And I believe we have Mr. Mark Whitelock here, who is the acting public works director, as well as Nick Rice, the purchasing manager.
Okay. Ms. Harley, after this, I'll remind you, we need to go back to number two.
Yes.
But we can continue this. Need a motion to approve resolution number 58-2020?
Still moved.
Got a motion and a second. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Ms. Harley?
Next on the agenda, as actually shown as number two, is the reconsideration of resolution number 56-2020. This is to correct the purchase price of the property known as 810 Second Street in Delmar, Maryland, from $38,000 to $35,000. Council may recall, at the last meeting held on July the 21st, this resolution was approved. There was an amendment to the resolution to remove the $3,000 donation, but the purchase price in the resolution was not changed. So this resolution is back on the agenda to correct the purchase price shown in the resolution.
I need a motion to reconsider resolution number 56-2020.
Still moved.
Got a motion, need a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Do we need to amend that because it says?
Yeah, we're gonna do that. All those in favor, reconsidering resolution number 56-2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, need a motion to amend the purchase price of resolution number 56-2020 from $38,000 to $35,000. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion, need a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of this amendment, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. All right, Chair votes aye. All those in favor, resolution number 56-2020, as amended, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution number 56-2020 passes as amended unanimously. Ms. Harley?
Okay, the next item for business is resolution number 59-2020. This is authorizing J.G. Parkinson's son as a sole source vendor to provide proprietary parts for the county's Western Starfleet in fiscal year 2021.
I need a motion to approve resolution number 59-2020 and a second.
Still moved.
Got a motion. Who made the second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Larry, have a question.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Can you clarify what the Western Starfleet is?
Trucks.
So all the county trucks?
They work out to the?
Certain trucks. Where's Mr. Whitelock?
There he is.
Mr. Whitelock, can you come up? Please state your name and title.
I'm Mark Whitelock, Deputy Director of Public Works.
You can bring it down while you're talking.
Nicholas Rice, purchasing agent.
All right, go ahead with the question. Bring your mask in.
Can you clarify what the, what, where is it at now?
I said star.
Can you clarify what that is?
It is a roll-off truck, basically. The county public works through roads and saws, we have a mix of international, Peterbilt, and Western Star trucks. These are the Western Star trucks that are used for the recycling bins, trucks, and those types of things.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, bring the mic closer to you. You guys go ahead and stay there. Any more discussion? All those in favor, resolution number 59-2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes 59-2020, passing unanimously. Ms. Harley?
Next is resolution number 60-2020, authorizing Vermeer Mid-Atlantic LLC as a sole source vendor to provide proprietary parts for Vermeer Equipment in fiscal year 2021.
All right, need a motion to approve resolution number 60-2020?
Still moved.
Got a motion, need a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions? Ms. Ackley?
Same question.
Vermeer Grinder is the grinder that we use in the brush pile. It's a big, heavy-duty grinder for grinding all the brush that comes into the landfill.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I think, I think we're gonna need that grinder probably soon.
After today.
Especially what's coming out of my backyard.
I think it's all over the county.
They set the line of three quarters of them all right now.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor, resolution number 60-2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution number 60-2020 passing unanimously. Ms. Harley?
Okay, next for your consideration is resolution number 61-2020. This is authorizing WHO Manufacturing Company as a sole source vendor to provide OEM parts for the WHO Tub Grinder in fiscal year 2021.
I need a motion to approve resolution number 61-2020. Got a motion? Got a, need a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Same question.
Ms. Ackley?
So the Tub Grinder is another grinder that we have in our brush pile. It's basically for the bigger stumps. The Vermeer Grinder will take large pieces of tree, but it won't take a full stump. The grind, that grinder will. It's an older machine. We keep it just basically to grind stumps.
Thank you. I appreciate your explanation. I'm sure there's many in the public who don't know what that is either, so thanks.
Any more questions?
Next is resol, oh, sorry.
All those in favor of a resolution number 61-2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution 61-2020 passing unanimously. Ms. Harley?
Okay, next is resolution number 62-2020. This is to change the county resident agent registered with the State Department of Assessments and Taxation from R. Wayne Strasburg to John D. Posota, Director of Administration. State law requires the county to designate a resident agent to accept service of process for Wacomico County. Wayne Strasburg was previously designated as the county's resident agent, but as of June 30th, he has retired. So this resolution is appointing the new Director of Administration as the county's resident agent.
All right, need a motion to approve resolution number 62-2020?
Still moved.
Got a motion, do I have a second? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Ms. Harley, how does that affect his acting title?
I don't think it affects it at all. I mean, he would still accept service as the Director of Administration.
So we're good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any more questions? All those in favor, resolution number 62-2020, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution number 62-2020 passing unanimously.
Next for your consideration is resolution number 63-2020. This is to approve the engagement letter dated June 5th, 2020, between PKS and Company PA in Wacomico County, Maryland, for fiscal years ending June 30th, 2020, 2021, and 2022. Council previously approved an engagement letter dated February the 10th, 2020, that referenced a June 17th, 2019 audit scope. And the June 17th letter referenced the March 2014, I'm sorry, 2014 audit scope. The engagement letter before council this evening is dated June the 5th, is updating that audit scope that was previously approved by council. And we do have Mr. Mike Kleger here with PKNS Company, if there are any questions.
All right, need a motion to approve resolution number 63-2020?
Still moved.
Got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Ackley?
Mr. Kleger, what, what are the difference, what is the difference?
The main issue, the main changes were related to audit standards, which change related to independence, requiring us to state specifically what our role is in management decisions, which is virtually nothing, since we're independent auditors. And so basically, those were the major changes that occurred. We also added a section in the engagement letter regarding COVID-19 this year, which was reviewed and approved by legal counsel for the county. We did make some changes to that based on his recommendations. And that was really the only significant changes to the, to the audit engagement letter.
So will you be auditing the COVID funds?
That was part of it, yes, the federal funds, the stimulus program funds that was added. As well as the fact that, from an audit standpoint, some procedures may change because of the way we have to audit remotely in some cases. So we added that paragraph.
Okay.
Just to stipulate the terms and conditions for the audit. Those were the only major changes from the last audit engagement letter.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Any more questions?
Mr. Kleger, I just didn't know if you were anticipating any additional funds due to the responsibilities of COVID grants, et cetera? The COVID-related, were you anticipating any increases? Could you say that at this time?
From an audit standpoint? No, I don't think the fees are gonna change as a result of that. But as stated in the letter, if we do anticipate anything, before we incur those procedures, we will run it by the council for pre-approval. So that was, that's our intention with that paragraph.
Thank you.
Any more questions? All right, all those in favor, resolution number 63-2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution number 63-2020 passing unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Kleger.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that is all I have.
Okay, Ms. Taylor?
Yeah, this is on for introduction tonight. Legislative Bill number 2020-06, to amend the 2020 operating and capital budget to increase the Wacomico Youth and Civic Center budget in the amount of $530,000 by transferring $200,000 from the Recreation and Parks prior year funds balance, by transferring $75,000 from the Recreation and Parks current year budget savings, and transferring $255,000 from the general fund contingency. And I will say, just I have some concerns about the resolution.
All right, need a motion to introduce legislative bill number 2020-06.
Still moved.
Got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Steve Miller's here.
Steve, can you come up, please? For the record, can you all introduce your name and title?
Yes. I'm Steve Miller, Director of Recreation Parks and Tourism for the county.
Pam Olin, Deputy Director of Rec. Parks and Tourism for the county.
Okay, Ms. Olin?
I understand, you know, from the COVID situation, that our revenues are gonna be greatly impacted at Civic Center. How long do you think these transfers, you know, are they gonna carry us at any, to any point?
The transfers we're addressing is for fiscal year '20, so that would have carried us through June. This year, of course, a lot depends on what happens in this current year. Obviously, there's still concerns of limitations with events and, but this, this just addresses last fiscal year.
Right, okay. So do we see, do we see any anticipation of having to come back and asking for more money out of contingency in the near future, or?
I mean, it's hard to say. We're beginning of August. I do have concerns, honestly, with FY '21 budget, both from Civic Center and Recreation and Parks. A good chunk of our budget, nearly three-quarters of our budget, is derived from user fees and program fees and rentals. If we, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen, but if we're looking at another shutdown or scaled-back ability to do activities, that's going to be a concern. To know what that's gonna be and what number, at this point, we don't know.
What steps have been taken for savings at Civic Center so far?
So we've, we've got several positions that will remain vacant as cost savings. We've limited, as far as projects and operational expenses, to the extent that we can. We've not brought in any part-time people, so we're handling everything with the full-time people we have. And then we're looking, the bigger problem, honestly, is revenue generation. And that's, we're trying to reinvent ourselves here without having the ability to sell tickets and to do those types of things. We're brainstorming different ways of things that we are permitted to do, where we can generate revenue, and that's, that's the biggest challenge that we have.
Any more questions? Ms. Ackley?
I was wondering if you engage the public school system in the use of the Civic Center for any type of remote learning. I know there's, most of the private schools are staying open and having students. And I'm just wondering where all these kids are gonna go, even with after-school, the after-school programs that you host. It's very concerning that you're not gonna be hosting those programs because the school won't be open.
Correct. Yeah, that's a concern that we have as well. You know, we rely on the schools for our programming, as you know, for indoor and after-school programming. To answer your question, we've, we've not had extensive conversations as far as using the Civic Center for a learning-type atmosphere. That's, that conversation has not happened, to my knowledge.
Mr. Cannon?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Miller and Olin. How are you? A few questions, a couple questions I had. There's $200,000 from Rec. Parks prior year, and then there's $75,000 from the current. And then in addition, there's $255,000 from the contingency, I guess then from the current contingency?
Correct, from the 2020 contingency.
From the 2020 contingency.
Correct.
Well then, I, my question would be either for Levin or Mrs. Harley or for Mr. Taylor. These are amounts, if these are amounts that are affecting the prior year, the fiscal year 2020, wouldn't that require us to now amend the '21 budget? Believe me, this confuses me. But the amounts that were, let's use the term, carried forward into fiscal year '21 are now no longer the same amounts. Wouldn't that require us to also have to go back and amend the operating budget for fiscal year '21?
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, I believe it does. And the reason for that is because there are two charter sections that apply. One of them, Section 708, and that relates to last year and transfers of funds between departments and within departments. And essentially, either of those transfers had to have occurred in fiscal year 2020. And of course, since we're here tonight, they didn't. And then there's another section, I believe it's 709, that once the fiscal year ends, in other words, when fiscal year 2020 ended at the end of June 30, essentially, any remaining monies flow back into the general fund, with the exception of anything that has been earmarked. For example, if you've gotten a bill in and just haven't paid it, or you get a bill in July the 3rd for expenses in June. And that hasn't happened. So I think what has to happen here is basically, I think the budget for this year has to be amended to bring funds in to pay the deficit essentially from last year. Because no money was moved around last year to cover it. It's possible that some or all of it could have been, but the fact of the matter is, it wasn't. So I think the way to do this under the charter, and if you'll recall, a couple years ago, we had quite a discussion about this 708 section, and actually amended it. And it was passed in referendum in 2018. So I think that the long and short of it is, and the simple way to do it is just to amend this year's budget and stick more money in to cover a deficit from last year.
So how's that gonna affect this legislative bill tonight?
Well, it would have to be done differently. In other words, we would have to essentially amend this year's budget to put money in to cover what is essentially a leftover outstanding bills from last year.
May I say something? In my years of working in government, between here and my prior employer, the fiscal year itself is not closed until the audit is complete and you have paid all your bills and you have completed your audit associated with those bills for that fiscal year. So you have the ability, if council so desires, to make changes to the budget because the budget is part of the audit process that then gets presented in your audit report. So this legislative bill will allow us to amend the budget and reflect the status we want to show for the audit. Because if this does not go through, then yes, you do have a deficit. You have a overspending of budget, which will be noted in our audit. And we will get a comment of some sort. I don't remember, having left the public accounting world a while ago, I don't remember exactly what that would entail, but we would get a comment in our audit for having overspent our budget. The budget itself is still available to move because we make payroll payments after the year. We make, we make audit adjustments after the year. We make expense payments after the year. If the budget was a static thing at June 30th, those things wouldn't be able to happen.
What you're saying makes sense. Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, the only, the only problem is, you can look at it in an accounting sense, and yeah, you can do anything with your books, move money around whenever you want to. The problem is, we have charter provisions, which are essentially legal provisions. The other section I was referring to, it's actually 710, not 79. And the title of the section is Lapsed Appropriations. And it begins, unless otherwise provided by public general laws, "All unexpended and unencumbered appropriations in the current expense budget remaining at the end of the fiscal year shall revert to the county's general fund." I mean, that's essentially simple, automatically operating language. I did mention, there is a possibility of encumbering something, but I don't think that applies here because most of this money is being moved from different departments into another department. And so encumbering isn't, isn't really a factor. And as I say, it's not that the money can't be paid and the bills can't be paid. It's just that to comply with our charter requirements, which are black and white, the appropriate way to do this is to appropriate money in this year's budget to cover a deficit from last year.
Ms. Olin?
Again, in an accounting world, the close of a fiscal year does not mean June 30th, nothing more can be done to your books. So I would interpret, I am not a lawyer, I readily admit that, I'm an accountant. But I would interpret that language to mean that the books are still open because we are still open for June 30th until the audit is complete.
And they're working on the audit now, as you saw?
Well, you guys passed the, the letter and?
The engagement letter.
The engagement letter, so they will be starting their work. Typically, that work takes place starting in September. I don't know, I haven't seen the schedule yet this year, but typically, they start work in September and complete it November, December timeframe. So there are things that can come up during that process that affect your books and records that you are yet not closed. The year itself is not yet done. That is, that is how I would take that language.
Mr. Cannon?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I would imagine that, that policy is most undoubtedly followed, except for the fact that when something needs to come to this table, that's such a large expenditure or such a large transfer, such as over half a million dollars, it's coming to the council's table because it has to have special process in order to be transferred, which I think is over the above the day-to-day transfers or spending that may occur, you know, in June, July, August, and September. I'm only saying that because with this, with this approval, someone's gonna go back. And first of all, I do think it needs to be amended to say transferring 255 from, did you say fiscal year '20's general, general fund contingency last year?
Yes, it is fiscal year '20's.
I'm gonna make an amendment in a second that it should state that in here, because it doesn't state that it's fiscal year '20's. But again, to me, if you're taking 255 from last year's contingency? But again, to me, if you're taking 255 from last year's contingency, the budget we just passed says there's 255,000 more dollars that has been transferred into fiscal year '21. And I think that leaves us some confusion if we don't have a paper trail.
The, I, again, with these numbers, you have the spend-down of your fiscal year. Until that fiscal year is closed, that contingency that sits there at June 30th has not yet rolled to '21. You had contingency that you appropriated from your available balance to appropriate for '21. It did not, because you passed that budget in April. You had no idea how much contingency you were going to have remaining. So the contingency that was budgeted for '20 was a set number, and I believe it was, I actually went into the system today. There is $767,000 of contingency that has not yet been appropriated to spend for fiscal '20. So if this budget amendment happens, $255,000 of it would be spent from that 767. When the audit is complete, then it would roll back into your available funds to be appropriated by council. This 767 has not yet been appropriated. It's been appropriated in '20. It has not been appropriated in '21. You have separate money that's been appropriated in '21.
Yeah, can I comment? The only, the only problem with that is that contingency that she has mentioned by plain operation of the language I just read. I mean, the end of the fiscal year is June 30, regardless of what an accountant wants to say it is. I mean, that's just plain, simple English.
Mr. McCain?
When you read that, Mr. Taylor, but it said those differences go into the general fund, goes into the general fund.
That's right.
I mean, how's that different from what you're saying, Ms. Solon?
I'm saying
Isn't that what you're basically saying?
I'm saying, though, that that money needs to be appropriated in '20 so that when the audit comes out, we, we haven't overspent specific line items in our budget. Because without this appropriation, there is going to be a, a loss greater than what our budget anticipated. Our budget was built on a balanced budget like everybody else's was. At the end of a fiscal year, your encumbrances roll forward. So as soon as those encumbrances roll forward, which happens after we close down the last payments, which we haven't yet done for fiscal '20, those encumbrances then become part of your budget, and you immediately have an unbalanced budget in your department. That's that difference that Mr. Taylor was commenting on between the 600 and some and the 530 that we're recommending be transferred. Because we already have an unbalanced budget, but we're allowed to be unbalanced by those encumbrances. So I'm only asking for what I believe is going to be the rest of the unbalance that we're going to end up showing at the end of the fiscal year. Primarily, Mr. Miller came to you guys back in, I believe, March, and mentioned that we had a rough start to our fiscal year.
He had a presentation.
And that we would be coming to you with this. Unfortunately, the number became a whole lot bigger because we had to stop all operations in mid-March.
Because of COVID.
Because of COVID. And we still had all of our payroll, all of our benefits. Primarily, that is what generated our additional loss from what he came to you guys in March. So we prepped the council that this amendment was coming. We were hopeful that we could give you this information sooner. If it had been a normal fiscal year, we would have been able to know what our additional revenue was for the rest of the year and come to you with a budget amendment. It hasn't been a normal fiscal year, basically, since the day after Mr. Miller came to you guys primarily. So we have had zero revenue come in and no ability to cover our day-to-day expenses. And really, what we've presented to you, in addition to what he had presented to you in March, is our day-to-day expenses.
I don't, I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any question. We don't need to transfer the money. You guys don't need the money. You need the money to keep the doors open as much as you can. I think what we're seeing is a fallacy here between the financing and the charter. And believe me, in the past few years, we've had enough incidences with the charter not agreeing with some of the other things that are being done. So I think that's where Mr. Taylor's concern is, that somehow or other, we need to make, make this work. But we need to make it work so it follows the charter.
Again, I would say that the word "accounting closed" would tell you, we're not yet closed. June 30th has not yet been closed because we aren't done with June 30th. We're still making payments. We're still looking at all of our books and records to make sure every receivable that's on those books is appropriate. So if, if that stuff's not closed, how is this not closed? Is, is how, as an accountant, I would view that.
Well, I'm not an accountant, and I'm not an attorney, but you guys just confused me. Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not the normal process that she's mentioning about having some items that are outstanding, that are paid after the end of the fiscal year. That's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about major movements of money between different departments. And the charter covers that, and that's, that's the problem. In other words, we have a legal standard in the charter that we are supposed to follow. Now, as far as having an unbalanced budget at the end of the year, that's certainly not a crime. Budgets are intended to be balanced when you pass them. They sometimes don't end up that way. Typically, or more often than not, I think, we have a surplus at the end of the year. We take in more money than we spend. In this particular department, it's not that way, and it's because of the COVID. I mean, it's not like somebody went out and made a lot of ridiculous expenditures. Nobody's saying that at all. Nobody's even saying that it shouldn't be paid. But the way to do it is to take the money and appropriate it properly under the budget, which means appropriating it this year to essentially pay carryover bills.
Ms. Hurley, how do we do this?
As a small business owner, what you're saying makes perfect sense to me. You wouldn't, this would just turn into like an auditing nightmare. PKS is no longer here, but do we need to discuss it with another auditor? This, how this is going to affect it? I mean, I trust your opinion because I've seen that happen.
Yes, and I mean, I will, again, I, I disagree, I disagree with his interpretation of "closed." And so that's
I see what you're saying, yeah.
I have, in other realms, made budget amendments to prior years before an audit is done. Again, I, I can't even, I, I can't swear that it hasn't been done here. I, I haven't gone back and checked the books and records, honestly, to see if, because this is the first time since my, that we've had to do it for one of the departments that I'm responsible for. But
Well, how, how is this any different than, I mean, we close our books out? I mean, the books aren't closed on a county on June 30th. I mean, after June 30th, they're working on closing out the books.
And that's, and that's
Much like what you're doing right here in your department.
Yes, I'm trying to make it so that when we close those books, we have the budget so that there is not this discrepancy between what we spent.
I, I get, I totally get what you're saying.
I'm assuming, Mr. Hitchens, do you have a statement?
Yeah, thank you. I don't have a microphone at my desk. So John's original question was if fiscal, fiscal year '21 had to be amended on top. I don't know if that was answered. I'm not sure it would because the fiscal year '20 amendments that they're trying to do would just balance their budget out, so there should be no carryover. There may be some line items that need to be redone, such as fund balance, things like that, but it shouldn't affect their fiscal year '21 budget, correct Pam?
Yes, if this amendment is done in '20, as it's currently written, '21 would stay as it currently is presented based on what, what has been passed by council. If this is not passed as written, then yes, '21 will be impacted and our audit will be impacted.
Further, so I don't know the answer to this. I, I'm happy to speak with PKS this week and get back to the council and you all. But essentially, it seems like we have to kind of find a balance. Do we want to challenge the charter according to Mr. Taylor's interpretation? Or not challenge the charter and possibly get an audit finding? I think PKS may be able to give us some guidance on what kind of finding that would be, if it would be significant or not. Maybe it would be worth taking the finding and not challenging the charter. So that's kind of the decision that we have here. But on top of all that, and I hate to throw yet another wrench into it, it's a legislative bill, won't take effect for 60 days, at least 60 days from now. So that puts us out to mid-October, early November. Is that going to be a problem for the audit?
No.
It won't be?
It should not be. I know from emails I've received, we're trying to make this year's audit quicker. But I don't expect, last year's audit, I think, got signed off in January. I believe previous, in the other five years that I've been here, they've all been signed off in December. So any changes that took effect in October would still be part of what they're getting as their final number. And, and so that would be
Yeah, as long as it's not going to delay, I'm sure they could look at the legislative bill and, and
Yeah, and so the answer Again, this is my opinion, but I don't expect them to do their sign-off in October this year. I would expect November, December.
You make a, you make a good point, Levin, with the fact, and I, I was overlooking this myself. With the fact that this is an introduction, the council could go ahead and move forward with the introduction.
Okay.
And by the time this goes through the public hearing, it comes back for the council to make the decision to, to pass the legislative bill, we may want to pass it with amendments to help find some compromise with what Ms. Solon is, Ms. Solon is telling us and what Mr. Taylor might suggest and what Levin could come up with.
Okay.
This would give us a lot of time because we want to move it forward. We want you guys, we want this settled for, for you. And we know you're trying to do your due diligence. I don't, I haven't seen this much. I don't know if I've ever seen something to this effect being done, going back to a prior budget to this degree. So it's kind of new to everybody. The only thing I would suggest is, I'd say we should move forward with the introduction. I would only want to amend some of the parts of it to more clearly define which year we're talking about, which fiscal year we are really talking about.
Do you want to amend it tonight, or do you want to wait until the next?
Well, that part, I think we could get correct tonight without compromising any of the bill.
I guess, I, I'm looking at the legislative bill in front of me. In the first part, it talks about amending the 2020 operating budget in, in the big capital letters. The next paragraph, it talks also about oper, the 2020. And then the third, the third paragraph also says 2020's budget, and we're going to amend Civic Center, Wreckin' Parks, and General Fund contingency. They, those individually don't say 2020, but the sen, the part of the sentence before that does.
Right, right.
So you could add, you know, you could add from the 2020 Recreation and Parks prior year fund balance and from the 2020 current year, if you feel that it needs more specificity. But it is in that first part of the sentence saying that it is 2020.
Yeah, I understand. Like I told you before, I find this very difficult sometimes. It confuses me very easily. When you say prior year's funds balance, others, you're talking about the 2020 prior year fund balance, which is the money transferred from fiscal year '19.
Correct.
And then you say, then you, and then you say the current year budget, so that's the 2020 current year fiscal budget. Because if I read current year, I'm thinking, is it '21 going back, you know? That's what I'm thinking. So, and then transferring from the general fund contingency doesn't say where.
Could I just offer a suggestion? Any changes, why don't we just make them when this comes back up? Rather than, because there probably will be others.
That's also say, I mean, I like Mr. Cannon's idea of just introducing, because this is the introduction, so we'll get another crack at this.
Sure.
You know, before we, and then somebody, we can get some answers to a lot of these questions, and then maybe we, you know, whatever amendments we need to make. Because I don't want us to make an amendment and then have to turn around and amend our amendment.
Mr. McCain, you bring up a good point.
Yeah.
I'm okay.
Yep, that's fine.
So everyone's okay with that?
I'm not sure how confused I was.
Mr. Hitchens, thank you for your statement there. Okay.
Levin, if you would like me to join in on that conversation, I would gladly.
I think that's a good idea.
Join in.
Okay, all those in favor, introducing legislative bill number 2020-06. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, Ms. Hurley, the bill, the introduction passes. Do you have a date?
I do. We can have the public hearing on September the 1st at 6:00 p.m.
At 6:00 p.m.?
Yes.
September 1st at 6:00 p.m. All right. Thank you, Mr. Miller and Ms. Solon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open the floor up to public comments. Please limit all your public comments to three minutes or less. Any presented material may be submitted to council members. Please include at least 10 copies. And we have someone up there already. Please state your name and your county.
Darren. Darren Lombardo, Wycomico County. I'm here this evening on behalf of the Delmarva Parent-Teacher Coalition. I'm a fellow member, and I wanted to share some information with you this evening in regards to the Wycomico County Public Schools making their decision on closing the school. Couple of weeks ago, the Board of Ed decided to close the schools. And what, before they did that, they provided a survey to see what parents thought. The parents were presented with three options on the front end. That is distant learning, hybrid with a combination of school and home learning, and then traditional learning. When you went into the survey, it did not give you the option for traditional. And so parents were very confused by this. You could see in the middle of page one that they were only presented with the option of hybrid or virtual only. So I guess the, the results of those surveys concluded, and the superintendent and the board unanimously voted to have complete virtual school for the, for half of the school year. We were wondering what metrics the school system used to determine their outcome. So with that said, we were perplexed, and we, and we have not seen any publication of those results. So we decided to launch an independent survey to poll parents as to what they really thought. So if you look on page two, you can see the survey. And the survey asked some very simple questions, but some additional questions that the Board of Ed perhaps overlooked. And so we got pretty good feedback here. And there's a question at the end of the survey. And it says, regardless of your personal choice above, what if the school opened for those parents that want their child to be in class and provided virtual learning for those parents who want their child to remain at home? Do you support a parent's right to choose what's best for them? It's a yes/no answer. So we have the results based on a sample size of 1,082 surveys. Of those surveys, some parents have multiple children, so we had a pretty good feedback. We broke it down. We could see of the parents, 29.63% said open the school, 18.42 hybrid, and keep school closed, 51.95% for the parents. Those who are both parents and teachers in the school system, 51% said to open, 13.19% said to, were in favor of the hybrid, and 35.71% said to keep the school closed. And so we come down to teachers, which 19%, 19.18% said to open the school, 16.29 hybrid, and 64.53% said to keep the school closed. And so what we did is we put an average across all the groups to see that 33.30 for open, 15.97 for hybrid, and keep school closed is 50.73. So, and then, of course, the question of what you're, what's your personal choice? Of whether, regardless of your personal choice, to open the school and, and provide virtual for those who want to remain home. 80.95% answered yes, 19.05% said no. There's all sorts of data here, and you can look at this when you have some time. But I found it real interesting But I found it real interesting of the people who are teachers only and did not have children, there's a drastic difference there, which shows that there's an outside influence somewhere. The document that you have before you explains that, and I'll move on. The bottom line is, 50% of those surveyed favored opening the schools at some capacity. Okay, so that tells you something, whether it's hybrid or just flat-out open the school. With all things considered, our recommendation is to open the schools Monday through Friday. Those parents that want to send their kids to school, they do so. Those parents who want to keep their kids home, they do so. By doing that, 50% of the school, based on this survey anyway, would reduce the school size by 50%. So the social distancing would be addressed by that alone. So how can it be achieved? I talk about this in the document. Each class can have a webcam and audio feed that remote students can join their class in real-time using Zoom. Another option is for teachers who do not want to return to school can be assigned to instruct students that remained at home. The teachers that want to return can instruct those students that return to school for in-class instruction. With that said, the Wycomico County Board of Ed is receiving $262 million for the 2021 school year, plus the additional CARES funding. In that budget, they agreed to do certain things and carry out instruction for our students for this county. And so if they're not opening up schools for half the school year, if they choose to go that course, it is their responsibility, and it's the county to see that they do this as well, return millions of dollars to the federal, state, and county levels for the funds that are not used because their overhead is greatly reduced. As you recall, looking at the new budget, there's several positions added, new guidance counselors, all sorts of things that were added this year, with approximately a 3.8% I believe increase to the overall budget. There are a lot of things that won't be used in that projection. So I just wanted to share that with you tonight, and I want to encourage the council to see to it that those funds are used appropriately and not misappropriated. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo. Do you have any more public comments?
My name is Vincent Chapanis. I am a retired Lieutenant Commander in the United States Navy. I am a computational physicist, engineer, and educator. I have taught in Maryland, and I've taught in Montana. And while I was on the Fort Belknap Indian Reservation, I did what I'm trying to do here tonight, as they asked me to advise them on various issues, that I had the expertise to provide. So I have done a lot of computational analysis on the COVID-19 infection rates and also the disease-specific mortality rates. As of today, in our county, there have been 1,302 people who've been infected. I think that the disease-specific mortality rate in the county is just around 100, maybe more. Now, when you figure, and people look daily at what goes on with the number of people who are infected in the United States, all right? The population of the United States is roughly 331,157,000 and some odd hundreds of people less than 1,000. That population increases daily by plus, approximately plus 5,000. So the, 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 the disease-specific mortality rate in the United States is the number of people in the population who have died from COVID-19 divided by the population. When you take the numbers and you divide the number of people who have died according to COVID-19, and you divide that by the population, you know what the disease-specific mortality rate is? It's 0.043% plus or minus 0.005%. That is minuscule. If you want to look at the county, you take the 1,302 individuals that are infected, and you divide that by the total number of the population that's infected. Then you take the number of people who have died from the illness, which is 100 or maybe more, and you divide that by 331 million and odd number of people. I think that this disease has been blown out of proportion in a lot of different ways. And when you look at the numbers, it's disconcerting because the number of, the infection rate seems to increase, and it's about 1%. The infection rate is 1% in the United States. 1% of the population is infected. The number of individuals who recover from, basically the number of individuals in the United States who are not affected by the coronavirus is approximately 99.56%. So I'm here to offer another alternative to reopening the school. The CDC, if you go to the cdc.gov, you will find that the CDC has laid out every possible precaution and guideline to all of our schools in the United States of how they can safely open schools. And myself is a teacher and a parent. I wrote an article for the Institute of Research and Development of Education, I think it was July 19th. And I said that, you know, safest approach is to not reopen the schools. But I've changed my mind as I have continued to look at the numbers scientifically. They really don't validate closing the schools down completely. With using the social distancing and maybe perhaps opening up the schools for those parents who want to send their children to school, or for parents who want to keep their children at home, I think that's the hybrid model that our county and the Wycomico County Board of Education should consider. And I think there's adequate funds to do it, and I think that if they need additional funds, they can get it through the CARES Act. They can buy tablets, they can buy cameras, they can do whatever's necessary. And I think that by offering that choice to the parents and the teachers, because as a teacher, I'll volunteer to teach. I don't feel that, that, I don't feel a threat to the virus. Some teachers are concerned about it, and I understand that, okay? They look at the numbers, they see the numbers, it's constantly in the news, it's scary business, okay? But when you're, when you're a computational physicist like me, the numbers tell me a different story. And I just wanted to offer that to the county council for consideration because we really need to look at that. And, and I think that the, the information is there on the CDC site, and I think that if they follow the CDC recommendations, I think they can come up with a hybrid plan to offer reopening the schools to those who want the schools reopened. And allow parents who don't want to send their kids back to school to allow them to have them at home in the, in the program where they do remote learning. And I think it works out. I think they'll have, I think that teachers who are parents will want to have their, would want to go back, they want to take their kids back to school, and they are willing to go back and teach. So I think it won't be any problem to have teachers who are willing to go back and teach. And that's pretty much what I wanted to, what I wanted to talk about this evening.
All right, thank you. Any more public comments? No more public comments. Council comments? Any more council comments? Mr. Cannon?
Yeah, I would just briefly say thank you, Mr. Lombardo, and thank you, Mr. Chapanis, for speaking tonight. We appreciate it. I know that, Mr. Lombardo, you've spoken before, it's before from North Michigan, and it's very detailed. I appreciate the time that you both take on this. Thank you for your service as well.
Thanks, sir.
My understanding from, from attending the Zoom meeting, the primary reason that I understand, I'm not defending anybody, this is just my interpretation from the Board of Education, but the primary reason that this was done was simply because of the fact that if they were to go hybrid, or if they were to go full, you know, back-to-school 100%, I think the concern was made that if there were to be any type of an outbreak in any one of the schools of any COVID, of any one individual, the entire school may have to get shut down again. And all the children that were anticipating, you know, a semester in school would have to then go back home, and they would have to reconfigure everything else for a virtual classroom. So with that in mind, erring on the side of caution, more so, I think, than even the health issue, just the disruption that it might create was the, I think, the main reason for the choice behind the virtual learning for this semester. Again, I'm not defending it, that was just my interpretation.
Actually, sir, that's a very valid reason to not, to not reopen schools. In fact, the CDC does not address that. And, you know, the other issue is, the CDC does not address the fact that, in my opinion, if you're going to reopen schools, the temperatures of each student and teacher that enter that facility should not only be taken, but they should be screened with a questionnaire. So if that's the reason, then that's a legitimate reason and consideration, because I don't know how you do that, because once, once student tests positive, then you have to quarantine the entire school population.
Right. Again, I really appreciate you taking the time to come before us in your interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Mr. Holloway?
I want to thank, thank you, gentlemen, for coming in tonight. One thing I don't know, and I really want to talk to somebody from the school board, I'm starting to get phone calls from parents on the east side of the county that are having problems with internet access in the rural areas. A lot of them don't have Comcast, a lot of them don't have Verizon, an adequate Verizon. And so they're having problems. They can hook up, then it cuts off. I don't know what the school board's going to be doing about that, how they're going to address those problems. So that's something I think we need to talk to the board about, how they're going to address these problems of making sure that somebody that lives in a rural area has the adequate access that they need to learn. I can understand teachers not wanting to go back and teach, and I can understand parents not wanting to send their school, kids back to school, and I can understand parents wanting to send their kids back to school. But however it happens, the children that aren't going to school needs to be able to access the internet. So that, that's something I think that needs to be addressed further.
Yeah, I agree. Mr. Cannon?
I think we're having the Board of Ed to come, when is it, September?
August the 18th. They'll be here. Yeah. They're scheduled for 1:00 P.M. on August 18th.
So we can ask them questions then?
Yeah.
All right, any more council comments? Ms. Ackley?
I just wanted to let everyone know that this Saturday, the Word of Life Center and a few of the community partners are having a, are having a community fair for our vulnerable population of students that will not be returning to school. We will have Maryland Food Bank there, the United Way, Habitat, Free Legal Services, and Oasis Parents Place of Maryland. Tri-County Mediation is actually hosting it, and the Haitian Development Center. It'll both be in Creole, and it will be in Spanish, so everyone is welcome. Thank you, gentlemen. I am a member of the Parent Teacher Coalition. It's been extremely helpful in supporting parents in this process. And you are correct, I tried clicking on the green button, and it wasn't, it didn't work. So you had to pick either not go back or hybrid. Unfortunately, we, the council was really engaged in that decision-making, and so having answers, we just don't have them. But hopefully, the Board of Education will be able to figure something out, because I know all the private schools are filling up quick. And so that's very scary to me for the next year and the maintenance of effort. I'll have a look.
Thank you, Ms. Ackley. Mr. Hastings?
Thank you. Just so it's said, and I apologize, Mr. Don, if you were actually going to mention this, but in case any of the public were, didn't see the obituary for County Executive Culver, the service is going to be held on August 11th at 1:00 at the Civic Center. And of course, I know my thoughts and everyone else's thoughts here, I go out to Chris and Courtney and the family there. I think the very first time I met Mr. Culver was actually on the paddle boats in the 90s when he was first getting that going. That was actually a pretty amazing thing, but from Field 7 and 1/2 to the, you know, expanding the Quantico Creek Rural Legacy Area to the, you name it, to the, to taking down the Wiener Sign. I do hope the public takes the time to show their support and remember it's of Mr. Culver. That's it.
Thank you for bringing it up, Ms. Hastings. This time, I'd like to thank all the emergency services. Go ahead, no.
I was just going to take a quick comment. And Mr. Hastings, appreciate you bringing that up about the service next week. I was going to comment on that, but, you know, Executive Culver, yeah, I knew Bob going back to 1986. In fact, a lot of people, a lot of people didn't know this, but actually, when I entered into the real estate valuation profession, it was with Bob Culver. We were actually, worked together, and he actually started a company in 1986 doing real estate appraisals. And that's when I started my career, not realizing 33 years later, I'd still be doing that. But anyhow, we knew each other for a long time, and one comment that Bob used to make to me, that he had made this, it wasn't that long ago, he had made the comment that, because we always got along pretty well. And Bob said, you know, how could we get along so well and differ so much politically? And, you know, we used to joke about that, but I used to tell Bob, that's the way it should be. You know, we all should be able to have differences and still get along, and still be able to conduct our business and so forth. So, you know, Bob was very committed to our community, you know, he was, he was one of us, you know, he was a native Wycomico Countyan, and, you know, our condolences sort of go out to his, to his family.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Hastings and Mr. McCain. It started to say I wanted to thank Emergency Services, the 911 Center, they had a lot of calls today, and Public Works and Roads, they were out clearing the roads, a lot of trees falling, a lot of branches. Both the city and the county, they were working really hard. And the fire departments, they were like getting dispatch, had to bring, Salisbury had to bring out, outside fire departments into cover calls because they're so busy, power outages. I think my house was out five hours. Was that about what the county government office building was?
Approximately, yes.
Yeah, we lost power here, and even considered canceling the meeting because of that. So had a lot of people working to get the, the power back on and get the roads opened up for us. Power companies, they discontinued working for a while because it was too windy, and then they went back to work. So we really do need to thank them too. A lot of people lost power, so thank you. With that said, I'd like to move on to adjourn from legislative session and to go into open work session, followed by closed work session pursuant to General Provisions Article 3-305 B7 to consult with legal counsel and to protect the attorney client privilege. Need a motion to go into open work session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Ms. Hurley? Or Mr. Taylor?
Yes, this is a continuation of the closed session, pardon me, the work session that we had at the
Yes.
last meeting regarding the legislation that been asked to prepare regarding certain personnel matters, and I'm speaking primarily now of personnel who would be confirmed by the county council for their particular positions, department heads, deputy department heads. And what, what I've done is I've taken the graph that we looked at at the last meeting, which which basically had everything thrown in, it was kind of a kitchen sink approach, everything was just in a list of different provisions, and I've divided them into three separate draft bills, the purpose being to conform to the legal requirement that a bill is only supposed to address one particular subject. And the, the legislation addresses several different subjects, and they've not been divided. There are three draft bills. There's a long bill, three pages, a shorter one, two pages, and a very short one, one page. I'll start with the longer one. I've also added on this bill and the other two, the prefatory, the whereas provisions, as well as a heading for the bill. So that is new from the material that we reviewed at the last meeting, that part of it. The language that's down in the action part of the bill, everything after the, now therefore provision, that's essentially the same language from last time, except, as I pointed out, it's been divided into, into the three separate bills. So that's it. I mean, that's what I've been asked to do. I have reviewed these with Mr. Maloney. In fact, it was his suggestion that the council should consider this type of legislation. There is one substantive difference, and that is that you recall the fine provision that we discussed at the last meeting was for $2,500. The state code that applies to what the county council can do and cannot do limits the power of criminal penalty or civil penalty, either one, to $1,000. So the $2,500 has been reduced to $1,000. And I think that's the, that's the only substantive change.
Okay. Right. Does counsel want to move forward with this? Any discussion on it? Mr. Hastings?
I'd say we, we still do have the language in there about the incarceration.
Yeah.
Right, is that?
Yes.
Was that to be pulled or not, or was that? I can't, I can't remember.
It's still, it still is there. I believe the reason it is is because this is supposed to be in concert with what the state statute, and it's simply reiterating what the Maryland provisions already allow. Doesn't mean that's what's going to happen. It just says that that could be the maximum based on, I would say, Maryland statute and what they felt was appropriate.
Just to, just to reflect on that just a little bit more.
Mr. Taylor?
The second whereas clause, the, the first bullet item in that second whereas clause, which is quoting from the Express Powers Act, state code, allows the council to enact local legislation to enforce ordinances adopted by the council under the Express Powers Act by criminal fines and penalties for violation, including imprisonment not exceeding six months, and also the $1,000 fines that I mentioned.
Right, but just, but
How can we?
Just because, just because it says that, by no means does it mean we introduce a, you know, legislation that includes incarceration. I mean, I'm not aware of
How can we, we enforce that? How can we enforce to get someone locked up?
Well, it would be like any other criminal penalty. I mean, somebody would prefer charges, and it would go before court.
So then the judge would, would draw the penalty?
Right. And we, we establish the penalty, just like any other criminal law. It's established by a legislative enactment, but it's enforced and applied by a judge in a criminal trial.
Yeah, but, you know, you get back to the whole issue of what's fitting for what we're speaking in reference to here. I mean, the situation that we're talking about, and including any kind of reference to incarceration, I mean, I, I mean, I have a serious issue with that. I mean, I've had, and I've had people since our last meeting when we, when this was, or the introduction was talked about, I mean, I've had numerous people in the community reach out to me, particularly on that, on that one issue. I mean, not the whole issue in general, but particularly on, on that incarceration issue.
Well, it's up to the council. I mean, all I can do is draft the, draft the legislation. I mean, I'll do it any way you all want to.
Mr. Holloway?
Well, I, I didn't vote to hire Mr. Maloney, the rest of the council, or some of them did, and he's drawn up this, I, I, I just don't understand. I mean, the council votes to hire an attorney to come up with a solution, and then when he comes up with one, I guess people aren't happy about it. I, I, I think the incarceration thing is a little over the top, but it also gives it the, I guess, the teeth that would keep people from doing that. The thing about the employees, I think it should be more directed toward the person making the payment. Because I tell you, I, I've watched a, or talked to a number of employees that'll call me what happened at the council meeting. A lot of them don't, don't pay attention to what the council does. The person writing the checks knows what the council does. I would be more interested in removing the employee, because in some situations, an employee could keep getting paid when they weren't supposed to be paid and not know it. But the person writing the checks, the person paying the bills or authorizing that knows what's right and wrong. And I think they're the ones that should bear the responsibility of any kind of infractions they make, so.
So you want to strike the one about employees?
Yeah, you know, like I say, there's a lot of employees, and they're, they're going to be caught in the middle. Yeah, that's, that's a point, you know, they're going to be, they're going to be ones caught in the middle of this whole thing. Now, I agree that they shouldn't do it if, if they know they've not been confirmed or, or whatever, but
Well, we talked about this last time, Joe. I mean, we, we, you and I agreed on this same issue about, you know, you can easily have employees caught in the middle, meaning, you know, they have a job. And, and a job and a title, and they're trying to do their job and their responsibilities, and they could get caught into this enundrum. But, you know, that's why I have concerns with someone just simply trying to do their job that they were assigned to do when, yeah, I mean, or maybe someone else more responsible than them, but, you know, having language in here like we have here, that's, it's, this is some pretty onerous stuff.
Well, I don't have a big problem with the incarceration part of it. If they, if somebody is blatant enough to go against the law, and there's no, there's no ramifications for what they do wrong, you know, we don't need a law.
Well, we got ramifications here pretty clear. I mean, you know, they're removed from their, they're removed.
They're what?
They're removed from their job. I mean, this, you know, this is given that legal authority to remove them from their job, as well as potential fines, et cetera. So, I mean, losing your, you know, having your job removed is pretty
After they've spent
Pretty final.
After they've spent the money.
I think, I think you're, you're overthinking it sometimes. Joe, with the employees, this isn't saying that we're going to march through the entire government office building and start locking up employees.
I realize that, John.
This is just simply giving us the flexibility so that if there is one employee out there who is culpable, then we have some type of recourse. That's all this says. It's just like the laws of the land throughout the United States. Every single person here can be held accountable. You know, we can all be, well, they don't use the electric chair anymore, but any one of us, if we commit murder, can be found guilty and executed. But it doesn't mean everyone in the country has to worry about this, there's this cloud hanging over their head. This is just, this is just legislation that will give the council the authority, the legislative body, the government, the authority to take measures if absolutely necessary. And you may never find this coming about whatsoever, but it does establish the groundwork so that if that circumstances might develop, of which we may never be able to comprehend yet, we've been surprised before, we could be surprised again. So if the employee's culpable, fine. If not, that, no employees have to worry about this. But at least it's here.
But in the beginning, John, somebody has to write that check. Somebody has to make that payment. They really should be the ones, they should really be the ones that are culpable.
Well, I understand, but then again, what happens if we find out that the employee and the, and the supervisor were both in on it together?
Well
That's why you do this. So you cover everybody, but then you only, you know, there's, there's, there's a judiciary process where you can define who truly may be culpable or not.
Right.
It just gives you the, the overall, the larger picture to, to be able to deal with if you have to, unfortunately.
I'd just be brief and say, I think above all else, I don't think, what we don't want to have, obviously, is a, a chilling effect. We don't want folks to, we don't want to have individuals who could be very qualified candidates or somebody who can see if they want to come work in Wycomico County and then see this and like, oh, I, I don't think I want to go, I don't want to have too much of this, or especially when it comes to like a finance director or somebody's important. I think at a bare minimum, we should, you know, we should drop the, the 60 days in jails a little much, I mean, even seven days does, shows the point, and it does what it's supposed to. But I think however we go, I just want to make sure that we're not excluding, you know, any, any kind of qualified candidates from, from not, not wanting to work here or be a part of it.
Mr., I think Mr. Taylor had a comment.
Well, just to, to kind of focus on Mr. Holloway's first point about the person who pays the check, pays the, pays the money or authorizes it. If you look on, on the longer bill, the three-page bill, down at the bottom of the second page, it's Section 5918, payment of salary prohibited, sanctions for payment. It, it covers exactly what you were suggesting. And then there's another section following on, on the top of Page 3, liability for the prohibited salary. And I'll also just point out again, the only, the only people that this really applies to in terms of receiving, receiving a salary are those personnel who need to be confirmed by the council in order to have their position. So we're talking about maybe 15, 20, something like that, people. And I just point that out because I don't want anyone, either here or listening, to think that this is somehow would apply to every county employee, because it wouldn't. In fact, a county employee could be discharged and still come in and still get paid, and it just wouldn't apply, because it, it only applies to those who have to be confirmed by the council. So that's, that's the thinking there, just to, to make clear on that, and also to indicate that it does address people who authorize the payment of the salary. And bear in mind now, this would only be after the, after that group of 15, 20 people, someone in that group has essentially, their, their tenure has ended, and they have remained. In other words, it's not, it would not apply under any other circumstances than that. And those circumstances are the ones that are in the very first part of this longer bill.
If we had three versions in front of us, you know, as Mr. Taylor kind of said, the long, medium, and short, so I guess we got to sort of pick, but, I mean, I just
No, they address different subjects, Mr. McCain.
No.
Yeah, they're not, they're not intended to be alternatives. They address three different subjects, and the reason
Were you trying to put all three of these together?
No, I'm trying to do three separate bills to conform to the general principle that a, a particular bill can only address a particular subject. Just, you know, just while we're on that, the second one, the two-page bill, addresses removal from office. That's the, the procedure for
Article four.
removal. And then there's another, the very short one, the one-page bill, other rules, and that addresses a situation where someone has paid a salary that's not provided for in the charter. So there, there, there are three completely different topics, and that's why they're in three different draft bills.
So in the end of the day, there'll be three separate bills. Bills.
You know, this, this is a little off the subject, not necessarily too far off, but back in '07, when we had the incident at the landfill, there was a number of employees involved in that, and we didn't have anything on the books. In fact, when the forensic auditor came in, he made some statements, if we'd had tougher laws and kept better books, then that would have never happened. So there was no fear out there at that time of doing anything wrong that kept them, kept employees from doing what they were doing. So basically, all the employees did that were caught was they lost their jobs, so.
Okay, my question is, okay, so we find an employee that violates one of these things, who files the charges?
The county council could, anybody could.
So we would go and file charges against the employee as a council?
If they, if they violate the provisions, yes.
Wouldn't that be the state's attorney that would do that, Bob?
Oh, they could probably take it to the state's attorney, too.
So who's going to prosecute them?
State's attorney.
So the state's attorney would be bringing the charges?
And bear in mind, they wouldn't, they wouldn't actually be county employees in, in the, in the normal sense, because their tenure would have ended.
Right.
They would essentially be former county employees.
So essentially, when they go to court, the court's not going to buy by this charter that we got. The court's got their own guidelines to go by. So this imprisonment and all this stuff, that judge isn't going to see, want to see the charter to charge this person with.
No.
They're going to go by what they got on their books.
Well, he'd want to see the ordinance, he'd want to see the county code.
No, what they're going to want to see is the facts of what this person did. That's what he's going off for. He's not, why is he going to go off with ordinance from the, from us?
Well, there has to be, there has to be a criminal ordinance specifying a crime and a penalty.
There had to be a criminal charge, not a criminal ordinance. I mean, if the person was stealing money from their county, that's the charge. You don't need no ordinance to see that they stole money.
Well, other, other than common law crimes
That's it.
There's a whole big, thick book of Maryland criminal laws that provide for all kinds of crimes.
Yeah, that's true. So what we're doing, pretty much is trying to rewrite the criminal laws, state laws, when they're already on the books. When we file
I think what we're addressing is something totally different than somebody stealing money.
What are we addressing, then?
We're addressing somebody that's working when they weren't confirmed.
So that's stealing money.
Well, I don't think the, the law looked at it that way in the past
Yes, well, if you're not hired, this is like what Joe said, you're looking at two people, somebody's writing a check for somebody that, that really shouldn't be working here. That's theft.
I agree with you. I think they're stealing county money.
So what we're doing is rewriting the laws.
But I don't think the judge is going to look at it that way. I think the judge is going to look for an ordinance.
Yes, he will. I mean, if, theft is theft, you don't need an ordinance. Theft is theft. I don't know that the judge will look at it as theft. I, I said earlier, I'm not an attorney.
The, the state code
The attorney came up with this.
The state code allows the council to define criminal penalties under the Express Powers Act.
Which is what you're doing here.
And we did that, we did that with the dog ordinance, the animal cruelty laws, we did the same thing.
Yeah, there's, there's
We set, we set laws and fines
Right.
As we did with the graffiti law. We did a graffiti law one time, we set, we set penalties for that. So we can set penalties. We've done it in the past.
And, and this isn't a document that says we're going to go around and pick out employees that we're going to have arrested. It doesn't work that way. I look at it as a deterrent to prevent stuff that has happened in the past.
Now, one, one thought I'll just throw out, I'm not suggesting that you do this, but there does seem to be this angst about the imprisonment part. A, a way maybe to, to finesse that would be to provide, leave the fine part in, but then if somebody is removed and doesn't remove themselves, in other words, stays on after number one, their tenure's ended, number two, there's been a removal procedure, and they still continue to come in and act as a, I'm going to say county employee, I really mean former county employee.
Right.
Then, in that case, then the imprisonment provision would kick in. That would be a way to maybe play the card a little bit differently.
And in that case, you have two parties involved.
Well, yes and no. I mean, assuming they were being paid, is that what you mean?
Right, if they're getting paid, there's two parties involved.
Yeah, if they, if they were being paid, the person who's paying them
And this is what we want to prevent. We've been talking the past year about having teeth, and now we want to tear this apart.
I mean, this, you'd have to have a pretty egregious set of circumstances before any of this would apply, to be honest with you. I mean, it's not
Like I said, I don't see that happening, and I look at this as a deterrent.
Yeah, that's sort of, I agree, and I think that's what the thinking was with, from Mr. Maloney, that this
Yeah, but I'd like to see all the references to incarceration not to exceed 60 days be struck.
Well, this is a work session.
We actually asked for that the last time, but we're still in there.
How do you feel, Arnie? You want to strike it? That's two. Joe?
It doesn't matter one way or the other.
Yes or no?
Yeah, we'll strike it.
You want to strike it?
Yeah.
Nicole?
Yes.
That's four, and I need to go further.
That's fine, yeah, we can just strike it.
All right, is everybody good with the rest?
Well, if you're going to strike it, could you replace it with just reemphasizing, and by whatever, by reemphasizing the Maryland code again, so that we would have that authority without having to specifically state it? Well, if you're gonna strike it, could you replace it with just reemphasizing, um, and by whatever, by, uh, reemphasizing the Maryland code again so that we would have that authority without having to specifically state it?
Well, if we don't, if we don't specify it as the penalty, then theoretically, it's not within the court's jurisdiction. In other words, the, we, we're, uh, we would be defining the parameters for the court. Do, it doesn't have to, it doesn't have to do imprisonment.
I, I agree with the fact that it sounds terrible, but there may be some day that some council may be, may wish that this had been done before. So I gotta tell you, it doesn't sound great, but there might be someone in the future that might be very glad against...
I feel exactly like that.
The only thing I would think is, is, as I said before, to, to retain the imprisonment for someone who essentially, after being removed, doesn't remove themselves. In other words, this would be after they've, their tenure has ended, and they've stayed on, the council's brought a removal procedure and decided to formally remove them under the second statute, uh, the second bill, and then they've still, they still show up and are occupying their office and doing whatever. Uh, and at that point, the imprisonment would, would kick in. That would be just a way to, to, like I say, to finesse that or play that card a little bit differently.
Because they know they're violating the charter.
Exactly. I mean, they're gonna know that, the whole, as I say, it, it's pretty egregious. It's not like somebody, I think, is just not gonna know what the law is and, you know, decide...
But Mr. Dodd just asked the council members, I mean, didn't get to everybody, but before, people already said they'd like to see that struck.
Majority.
Well, I was just thinking of, of leaving it for, in that one instance. But what, you know, you keep, we keep talking about the person showing up. If they don't get, if they're not getting paid, they're not gonna show up, and that's where it goes back to the person writing the checks. That's, you know, that's, that's ultimately the person that's, that's creating the problem, is the person writing the checks, not the person that's showing up when they've not been confirmed.
Now, the person that's proven the writing of the checks. All right, um, is everybody good with the rest? No opposition? All right. So we want to move on with it? Everybody good, moving on? All right, we got a majority. Let's move on with it. Thank you. Um, next we have a letter of support for Whitehaven Heritage Association grant application. Um, Ms. Ackley, you want to discuss this?
So, they are applying for a grant to repair the roof of the, uh, the schoolhouse. Roof has been repaired. They're, uh, applying for this grant to repair the, lose the church roof. Um, and they're asking for a letter of support.
All right.
In favor?
Did, Mr. Cannon?
In favor.
You're in favor of it?
Yes.
Everybody else in favor of it?
Everybody's in favor of it.
All right, moving on. Thank you. Uh, this time, we're gonna go into a closed work session. Need a motion to go into closed work session?
So moved.
God, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.